So I'm Sarah Page from the Fall River Redevelopment Authority. And I want to welcome you, and we have a whole welcoming party here. But I just want to thank you all for coming. I'm so glad you're here, and we look forward to all of your input. So I would... So I will now pass it to Senator Rogers.
Thank you, Sarah. Hello, everyone. Good to see everybody. Thank you. This is really exciting. Two years ago, in an economic development bond bill in the legislature, myself and Representative Schmidt secured a million dollars for the redevelopment of the Flint neighborhood. But before you actually access that money, you need a plan, right? This is capital money. This is money to do sidewalks, or lights, or sewer, or water, whatever it needs for capital, but you need to have a plan. So the city has been working very, very hard with the leadership of the Redevelopment Authority in developing a plan so that we know what we're going to ask the governor for when he authorizes the bond, when he actually goes out and borrows the money and gives it to the city of Fall River to make that investment. There's another economic development bond bill that they actually just had the public hearing on today that will be going through the legislature before the end of this session. So hopefully, we'll have enough information before then so that we can secure another authorization so that we can really make the type of investments in the Flint that's necessary. And we know that there's a lot of investments that are necessary there. So thank you. It's great working with the mayor, the Redevelopment Authority, of course, Representative Schmidt, and all of you to make this dream happen. So thank you.
You know, I think the senator deserves an extra round of applause because... Thank you, thank you. Because it was me who put that money in the bond bill. Of course, I helped out on the House side. It's all about working together, the senator, myself, and the mayor. But that's what it takes. Actually, I'm just so excited to be here tonight, as I know you are, because we've been working for this for years, haven't we?
Yes.
This is what we have wanted, to bring the community together, to have funding available from the state, to know that there's potential for future support from the state. So this is a monumental time for the Flint, and all of you should be so proud that you're taking part in it. Be here, be here for every meeting, and help guide us. I mentioned that we have a great team. We're awful lucky to have Mayor Paul Coogan. He has been supporting the Flint since he was elected. This has been his dream, to bring us together, and now I wish you'd give him a round of applause.
Okay, I've got a couple of people I'd like to introduce to work with us. We have a couple of city councils here, Councilor Michelle Dionne, Councilor Andrew Bolson. I also want to thank Mike Dionne from the Community Development Agency. He and I have pleased Pleasant Street a couple of times ourselves, and we'll probably be doing it again this summer, I guarantee you that. But I do want to talk a little bit about the meeting tonight. This is another important step in trying to get the Flint rehabilitated. Everybody in this room that's driven down Pleasant Street, that's driven on some of the side streets, know what we need to do and what the problems are. So tonight, what I'm respectfully asking for is ideas. That's what this meeting's about. If you came here to talk about graffiti, raise your hand if you don't know there's graffiti in the Flint. No, well, raise your hand, because we'll fill you in. If potholes, how about vacant buildings? Who doesn't know there's vacant buildings along Pleasant Street? Let's talk about those again. Our goal at this meeting is to accentuate the positives coming from the report, the positives from the people in this room that are going to move this project forward. If you came here to tell us what's wrong, that's the reason we're all here. We know what's wrong. We've got to find a way to tackle it, and we've got to find a way to fix it. And with Senator Rogers and Representative Schmidt and additional funding from the state, we can move this project along. We're being driven by our associates, and that associates who are hired to look at this whole project and how we can make the Flint more livable, more vibrant, someplace we can call home. That's the goal of the meeting tonight. If you want to complain and talk about things that are wrong, do it somewhere else, please. I'm not telling you not to say it. I'm just saying, give us a break tonight, and let's talk about positives and the way we can change the direction of the Flint. And I can't tell you how great it is to see everybody here tonight, and I look around and I see people that are engaged in the community and want this place to be a better place to live, just like the people up here in the front and the people we hired to give us some advice. So if that's what you're here for, I can't thank you enough for coming. It's important enough for you to give up a night to come out, but if you're here to tell us what's wrong, and this is what they did before, and how things didn't work, that's not what this is about. You have other places and other opportunities to do that, so please go do it. Please go do it. But right now, tonight, for an hour, let's focus on how we can improve the Flint, and thank you very, very much for coming. Thank you, everybody.
Well, now I want to introduce Emily Innis, who runs Innis Associates. She helped with our downtown urban renewal plan a number of years ago, and the waterfront plan. So when she was the proposal, we got proposals and we picked her proposal, and we're so happy they're working with us. She's going to introduce her team and really give a wonderful presentation. So I want to introduce Emily Innis.
So first of all, enormous thrill to be back in Fall River. Even bigger thrill to be in this neighborhood. I and my team have enjoyed learning about your neighborhood so much, but as consultants, there's only so much that we can learn. So what we really want to do is exactly as the mayor said, he pretty much stole my entire speech. We'd like to hear from you today. So I'm going to go through some introductions of people who have been involved in this process to date. I urge you that if you haven't already signed in and you'd like to be kept updated on future meetings, future events, please do so. I'll talk a little bit about the existing conditions from what we heard. We're going to do a gut check with you on some of those. We're going to get you around the room, looking at some ways to maybe spark some of that creativity that the mayor mentioned, and then we're absolutely going to have a chance for you to come back and tell us just what's on your mind. So we want to make sure that you have a chance to share that, ideas, excitement, what you want for your community. So first of all, let me introduce Iris Lynn from Hoverson Time Bomb Studio. Iris is a landscape architect, and has been working with me on thinking about some of the physical aspects of the neighborhood. We also have two separate economic teams with us. They're not here today because we weren't talking about the economy so much. We're working with FXM Associates, who also worked on the downtown and the waterfront plans with me, and we're working with RKG Associates. And we're looking with both of them at different aspects of the economy, both what's happening now and what could happen in the future. So we'd love to hear your thoughts on that. We've been really creative. And also, you see a list of names here. I'm not going to introduce every name, but I want to say that in addition to just the consultant team, we have an amazing working group of city staff members. You heard, obviously, Sarah, that Mike called out. Just if you're at city staff, okay, when I see you back there, raise your hand, wave. See, I'm not letting her get away with this. Members of the Citizens Advisory Group, if there's any ways, raise your hands. I know there's a few of you here. I'll call you out if you want to be shy, but we have one.
Don Steph here.
Yes, thank you very much. They have been terrific and starting to give us a flavor of some of the problems that because we know there are problems, but also some of the ways that we can think about those in a constructive manner, so I want to recognize them. And we also have the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, who with the Community Development Agency are the sponsors for this. So I see a few Fall River Redevelopment Authority members around. If you could raise your hands to thank you, John.
My whole team on our committee back there.
Oh, yes. Thank you, because you're sitting back there. We have interpretive services, so if I talk too much or too quickly, which is quite likely, or if you might need a translation of planning jargon, as well as translation from other things, they are here, able to translate Spanish, Portuguese, and Haitian Creole. Please make use of them if you need them. They'll also be available to walk through the boards if you have any questions on the instructions. Delighted to have their services here. It's a luxury we don't always get, and it's fantastic to know that we can communicate with as many people as we possibly can. So we had the welcome already. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the two programs that are working with us here. One, of course, is the Fall River Redevelopment Authority is a sponsor, and then the Community Development Agency, Mike Dionne, is sponsoring it through the Neighborhood Hub program. And the Neighborhood Hub program is a state program that gives funds to communities to help deal with their neighborhoods and come up with positive solutions. And there is a cohort of five cities for the 2020 round, delayed a little bit because of COVID. Fall River is one of them. So they are giving special funding that helps support this study. And if you need to know more in specific, happy to answer that or have Mike speak to it. There are also, you can see in that huge paragraph, and this will be available online as well, a lot of state agencies that are partnering on the Neighborhood Hub. So that's part of it. And this first meeting that we're having today is really talking about a roadmap or a blueprint of what can happen under that Neighborhood Hub program. There's also an urban renewal plan coming up and another. And I know when we think about urban renewal, a lot of us think about the 50s and 60s and things getting knocked down. That is not how we do urban renewal now, and it's certainly not what we're talking about, not that wholesale clearance that happened during those periods. Urban renewal plans now are plans that lead to action. And so what we do is we take the recommendations of the Neighborhood Hub Plan process, that roadmap I mentioned, and we pull out those things that are relevant for urban renewal, and then we create an urban renewal plan to deal with that. And we'll be talking about some of those today, but that's primarily in terms of those abandoned buildings, for example, that the mayor mentioned. Urban renewal is one way of dealing with individual abandoned buildings now. Again, not the wholesale clearance of the 50s and 60s. And then what the urban renewal plan does is allow the Fall River Redevelopment Authority to take action that helps support this roadmap. So the CDA, other city partners, will be implementing, taking action on the roadmap. The FARA would be taking action on the urban renewal plan, just to give you a sense of the context. So in terms of the purpose of this, it's almost two studies happening simultaneously. With the revitalization roadmap, the first part, we're looking at the redevelopment of substandard and vacant housing units on Pleasant Street and within the neighborhood, and revitalizing the overall area to be attractive and vibrant. Part of what we want to hear from you today is what does attractive and vibrant mean to you? We'll talk about some of those questions. The urban renewal plan, as I said, expands on that, addresses vacancies, addresses those underutilized properties, and that includes commercial properties. So we've got a twofold addressing houses or housing and commercial. The timeline, just roughly, we are right here at the public charrette. You didn't know you were coming to a charrette today. The roadmap is going to be a draft form, and that draft will be finished roughly end of this month, middle of next month, depending on the back and forth. The urban renewal plan takes a little longer because the roadmap has to come first, so we're expecting that to be done in September. There will be more opportunities. You can see, for example, public coming in here, and then all of these meetings are public as well. We also have an online survey that's open now, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that as we get to the end. So there are plenty of points at which, not just today, but as we move forward, plenty of points where we'd love your feedback. So I'm going to break this down into a couple of different things. One is sort of different topics. So we're going to start with buildings and economic activity. You can see a picture out there of a building that has been called out to us as problematic. And we've worked, as I mentioned, with the Citizens Advisory Group to find out what they heard, what we'll find out from them, what their values, what their concerns, and what their hopes were. So that's what you see on the left-hand side. And in terms of buildings and economic activity, this idea that people want to be able to go store to store without, you know, do their daily errands without having to actually leave the community, improving the area where people spend most of their day. So you will also get a chance, the board's behind you when we break up, you're going to get a chance to add your own values to all of these different categories. We definitely heard concerns about vacant buildings and abandoned and empty buildings, and so that's part of what we're looking at. But just an overall lack of development and emptiness of the area, that was something that got called out. And then hopes, retail on first level, upper store residential, reuse of abandoned buildings, not just the removal of them, just revitalizing the facades, making it a more pleasant area, and more business activity. So that, on each of these slides, you're going to see that breakdown of what we heard from the CAG. On the right-hand slide, you're going to see the hard data that our team is pulling. Now, I didn't extract all of it. There's a very, very long existing conditions report that looks at a lot of these characteristics, but just a couple of these things that are important for the study. So the fact that over 70% of the housing stock in this area is older than 1939, that says something to us about condition, about needs for upgrades, needs for energy efficiency, a whole list of things that as we look at this, we say, are there funding programs that can help address this? Are there other actions that the city can take to help address this, or other organizations can help address this? So as you look through these, now that, whereas we're looking at them, we're thinking, what are the solutions? And we're hoping to hear a lot of solutions, or a lot of ideas for solutions from you today. We talked a little about the vacant buildings and tired storefronts. From my perspective, I'm primarily land use and regulatory planner. I'm looking at the zoning, right? So I see these uses that, in zoning language, we call nonconforming, which means they were generally there before the zoning came in, and that makes it really difficult if you are a property owner, a business owner, say, you own your own shop, you want to make some improvements to it, you're a nonconforming use or a nonconforming parcel, all of a sudden there's a lot of hoops you have to jump through. So one of the things I look for is, where are those hoops? Is something preventing this investment from happening? In terms of community identity, so you know, we started with the buildings, with the physical area. We did a lot, not just on the buildings, but on the sites as well. We did a whole inventory, and that is online. I'll talk about those online maps later. But we also wanted to talk about community identity, because a physical place could be an expression of that community identity. So we look for, are there stores, and the languages on the storefronts reflect the people who live here? Are there murals? Are there public arts? Is there a visual expression of identity coming out through there? And what I loved about some of the things that the CAG said, the idea that this is a proud family community, that, you know, there's a long history of people who have lived here, grown up here, their families have grown up here, a sense of community, a sense of diversity, that these are all values, that this area has real possibilities. And, you know, that's an encouraging thing. We like to bring that out of the planning. And then hopes for a clean neighborhood, a vibrant neighborhood, restoring pride in the neighborhood. So again, as we look at things that communities can do, we're also then looking at the data. As we think about community identity, these vacant storefronts, these vacant buildings, this idea that the area feels neglected, and how do we change that? And you've got so many historic holdings in this area, and what does that say about how this area has developed over time and how the community has developed with it? In terms, again, of what we heard, a healthy community, we think of economic health, of wealth building. We also think of physical health, people's ability to get around, the places they live, where can they walk, where can they play? So, you know, the walking trail, obviously, huge community resource. It's also the bottom of the steep hill for those who might have difficulty with mobility. So we look at, you know, are there connections there? Concerns about crime, drug, homelessness, again, the negative aspects of it. But then what are the conditions? So there's a nice big SAT word up there, impervious surface. That means that the water can't soak into it. So Stafford Square, when it floods, that's a combination of all the asphalt around. It's also a combination of sewer systems. So we look at what happens with that, how can that be addressed? There's not a lot of amenities for pedestrian comfort. I mentioned the topography. There's no, if you're older or if you have physical limitations, there's no place to sit down and rest as you're moving from one place to the other. And then looking at the public health data, the city's public health department was fantastic in steering me to a couple of useful websites. There are high rates of asthma, high rates of obesity, high rates of depression. All of this moves into this, and coupled with there, there's a low-income population. This all reflects the community health, in terms of economy and their physical health. What we like to do is, what are the things that by changing the physical environment we can do to address that? And again, we'd love some creative ideas from you. We've been doing our own research on opportunities.
I do have something funny to say about that last slide.
Please do, yes.
That's my client's car in the water.
I took that from a local news report from a couple of years ago. That was really funny. Not for her, love, no.
No, well, work dinner.
Yeah, that was kind of horrifying when I saw those, those pictures. So the advisory group, this is another thing that we would really like to hear from you. Sarah brought it up, and she and I were talking back and forth about the presentation. The advisory group had concerns about abandoned buildings. I put that because that was their top concern. But their second concern was that, you know, it's great that you're doing this, it's nice of you to visit the Flint, nice of you to have these consultants come in and say, you know, this is what you should be doing, and here's a pretty plan, but how are we going to follow through, right? We've heard things about planning before. And so what we'd like to do, I had one question, Sarah had another. Sarah would like to know, as would we, in the first year, what would give you comfort that this plan is moving forward, that you're actually seeing some implementation? And what I'd love to know, and you could be thinking about this, you don't need to answer right now because we will come back, and I'll come back to the slide, I'd like to know how you measure success in, say, 10 years? So what would you like to see moving forward? So that if we just snapped forward into the future right now, and we looked around and said, wow, this planning process worked. So a year from now, what would you like to have soon happen? What gives you comfort that we're moving forward at 10 years from now? So you can be thinking about that. There's some places to write it down on the boards, but I also want you to talk to it. So those are questions that require a thoughtful response. So I'm going to talk about some of the draft strategies that we've been kicking around. You're going to see the word draft on all of the next few slides, because these very much are draft strategies. They're coming out of the research that we've done so far, but without your inputs, so some of what you tell us may change a little bit about this. And we've narrowed it down to four main categories. So code enforcement, which also includes regular building inspections, addressing Pleasant Street, the revitalization of Pleasant Street, addressing the existing housing stock, and building acquisition and stabilization that goes to the abandoned builders. There's a phasing system as well, that some of these things can move forward more quicker than others. Under those, and I'm going to take each one of these in turn. So in terms of code enforcement, it's increasing the inspections on commercial multifamily properties, and then it's digitizing the data and making sure that data is accessible so that if an inspection is done, everything can be followed through from... One of the things that we're looking at, that we've seen in other communities, is this idea is that when an inspection is done and something has failed, that instead of saying, oh, your inspection has failed, sorry, we're going to run you off goodbye, it's, this has failed, we have a program to address this, let's get you into that program. But that's difficult to do if everything is paper-based, right? Because city employees have far more important things to do with their time than transcribing a lot of paper into multiple different databases. So that's where the digitization helps. It's important because we don't know how to address the conditions until we know what they are, and inspections can help with this. And I should say, these aren't single-family inspections, they're multifamily inspections, and they're also commercial tenant inspections. So it's not that you're going to fear, if you're living in a house, you own your house, you're not going to get a knock on the door to inspect it. It's more, it's stable that multifamily units are inspected on a regular basis. And so in addition to being able to give programs and advice, there's also the tracking of success. You know, how do we know that houses, three-family houses or six-family houses along this street have been addressed? Well, we've got it digitized, we can call it up and say, these, this many units have been looked at in this year and have been brought up to standard. So removal of lead paint, addressing plumbing or electrical violations, all of the above. And that leads back to that community health piece that I mentioned, of getting the places where people live, where they spend their time on a regular basis, into good condition that will support their health. Now, on Pleasant Street, the three sort of sub-items are tracking and filling vacancies at storefronts along Pleasant Street, so getting that ground-level plan. We just talk a lot about getting the ground-level active, so that's the first thing, is finding out what's going on there. Focusing the city's storefront improvement program. So the city has a storefront improvement program that provides funds to help small businesses and property owners address the facade, clean it up, paint it, maybe do a little signage. There's also a state program that the state has for vacant storefronts, and Fall River is a participant in that. So we'll be looking at, how can we direct some of those efforts to Pleasant Street in a coordinated manner to make sure that it's not just a storefront here, and a storefront here, or maybe down there, but that it's consistently happening? And then, from my perspective, changing the city's zoning ordinance. What's interesting in looking at it is that there are some uses that other places are looking at that would be very valuable for, say, entrepreneurs, small businesses that aren't currently mentioned in the zoning ordinance, so changing it to allow that. One popular one is something like, and you've already got some of it in your, or the beginnings of it in this area, allowing for manufacture and retail, I like to say a bakery, because you have some bakeries, but that would also be to a business that is manufacturing for wholesale, but also has a small retail shop with it. So there's a lot of that happening, thinking about incubation space, thinking about things that support entrepreneurs. Now, this is a longer-term piece, but we'd love to hear your ideas on whether or not that sort of activity is happening now, whether there's a space for it. I think in terms of the city's zoning ordinance, we also see a lot of businesses, as I mentioned, that are scattered throughout the neighborhood and not just on Pleasant Street. Current zoning doesn't really allow those, so that's where that starts to get to be problematic if they want to invest in their space. And there's some other components of that. And then addressing substandard housing, and we have three areas of that. Apartments above commercial, which brings people onto Pleasant Street. We know there's some already, maybe we can think about more. Rehabilitating by property owners and investors, so people who own the property already or buy the property and helping them bring it up to code, up to standards. And then rehabilitating properties to sell to new homebuyers, or to sell to home buyers. This is that part of that building wealth, is not everybody wants to move from rental to homeownership, but for those who do, finding programs that make it easier for them. And then supporting housing is twofold. One, as I mentioned, housing is out of date. It is, on average, much older than other housing, and it also helps support residents' health, as I mentioned before. It gives them stability, you're removing environmental hazards, you're helping their operating budget by making it more energy efficient. So it's really addressing a lot of those problems. And then the final one is building acquisition and stabilization. Now, there's something called tax title, which is if a building owner falls behind on his or her taxes and it builds up. This is happening to some commercial properties. The city can take that because of tax title and then move it to somebody who can address it. That is a tool. We're interested in thinking about it. Transferring city-owned properties to the FARA, the Fall River Redevelopment Authority. So city councils aren't really set up to be property developers, but redevelopment authorities are. So taking strategic studio parcels and moving them to the redevelopment authority, that's where the urban renewal plan comes in, is at this stage. None of the rest of that is really urban renewal, but this stage is. And so this is the acquiring, the blighted properties, acquiring the city-owned properties, turning them over by sale or whatever, to whatever process, there's multiple, to a developer who will develop them. This is key, under the patrol and guidance of the Fall River Redevelopment Authority, and that control and guidance is in the urban renewal plan and comes out of conversations that we've had. And then finally, assembling larger parcels for development. So if you think about a mixed-use building, or you think about additional housing, some of the parcels in this area, even on Pleasant Street, are quite small, so putting a couple of them together. These are all, again, tools. This is all a draft for, for discussion and listening to your comments. So, you're going to see this map over this table here. And there's, there's actually four boards. There's one, that's the, the full map. This is our area with the red line around it. And what you're going to do, it's, it's part of the whole exercise. I'm going to walk you through it now. Actually, let me just jump forward one step. So, I'll walk you through the boards and we'll come to this question, take, decide, take initial questions. So, there's maps over there, we're going to ask you to do some things at the maps. There's boards across there and behind you, we're going to ask you to do things. The maps, we're going to ask you to identify your favorite places in the area. There's, Iris is going to be having green and red stickers, and also the places that cause you concern. And she'll be able to record if you have any comments. You're more than welcome to go, green, red, move on to the next. If you want to stay and talk a little bit, Iris is happy to, to take that and comment. On these three boards, the red, the blue, and the green, we're talking about redevelopment, the, the community health, and the community identity. And it's what you saw up there on the boards, but we'd love your reactions to it, writing it down. And so, this gives you a chance to give us your individual opinions. And we'll come back and you'll be able to give your group opinions as well, and we can have a discussion. And then, finally, back next to Caitlin, we have our four strategies. Thank you, Caitlin, that was very well presented. We have our four strategies, we'd like you to prioritize them. And then, we'd like you to start thinking about that question earlier about what's success in a year and what is success in ten years? So, with that, I'm going to stop on this. The instructions are here, they're also on your agenda, if you picked it up, as are, if you turn it over and flip it to the back, should be all of the different strategies. So, if you, if you get up to that board where Caitlin is and you're like, wait a second, what was that we were talking about? It's on the back of your sheet. So, before we break up, any initial questions about process or what we've been doing? Again, we'll, we will break into little groups to go around. Call you back in about twenty minutes or so, and we'll, and we'll start talking, you know, as we're reading about what we've seen. Are there any initial questions? Yes?
Yeah, hi, I just have a general question. Many years ago, there was a project that included the, the, the streetworks. It's a multi-billion dollar project, it was a downtown revitalization. I've lived in Florida all my life, this wonderful, the, the Flint area has been left me way, way, way too long. It's been ripe for redevelopment for a very long time. It was actually known as the second downtown. But my question is, these projects tend to be extraordinarily expensive. I think Quincy was in the multi-billion dollar range, something between two and two and a half billion dollars. My, my question is, how does a project, like, what's the plan for long-term financing? A project has, you know, broad as this? Because it's going to take a great deal of money. A million dollars is wonderful, I think it's terrific. Congratulations to the city and the state delegation for securing a million dollars. But frankly, that's a very, very, very small amount of money. Great seed money, but it's not the kind of money that's going to materially change the Flint where it should be and, and could be. So, my question is, now that we're talking now, where's the financing going to come from? Long-term finances to sustain this project for as long as this money can need to be sustained? Do the kind of work that you need to do in the Flint?
That is an excellent question. I am very glad you asked that. I'm glad you asked that at this stage because it's very easy to walk out of a meeting going, wait, why didn't I ask this, what would have had to cost, and how are we going to do it? So, as part of the, so there, there's two stages. As part of the roadmap of the piece that we're primarily talking about tonight, we've already started identifying some of the funding sources. In some cases, there are funding sources the city already has access to. So, it's talking about policy change to redirect some of them, or to direct some of them in ways that are more for the neighbors. So, through no fault of the city staff, they've been very responsive when things come up, but it's more about being proactive and giving value. So, that's the neighborhood plan. There are also, in addition to, there's city funds, there's state and federal funds that we're looking at. In terms of the urban renewal plan, that the, the urban renewal plan goes through two levels of approval. One is the city level, has to go all the way through a city council. Once the city council approves it, it goes to DHCD. And urban renewal plans must be created in a format that DHCD has laid out. Part of that format is a financial plan. And it says, you need to tell us what you're planning on doing, order of magnitude, what it costs. You're not going to put us down to a cent or even to the dollar, but we need to let them know how much it is and how you're going to want it. And so, as part of that, we look to a number of resources. We obviously always check to see what the city has available. But a lot of them are things like the Mass Works Grant, which is now part of the community-run staff program. There are parks grants, there are federal funds out there, not specifically for urban renewal. If you read the, the legislation, it, it suggests that there's some big federal fund for legislation that isn't longer true. But there are smaller grants, many of which address the things that we've been talking about. So, the financial plan, and we haven't written it yet, so I don't know what the components will be, but that financial plan will be in there and address exactly that. Quincy had to do the same thing if you were to do their urban renewal plan. I should also say that urban renewal now, in the 21st century, is really about creating the conditions for the private market to work. So, that's where the regulatory changes come in, the changing of zoning, the one or two catalytic projects that the Fall River Redevelopment Authority might do, leveraging some of those grants, that says to a private investor, you know what? It is worth being here. We are putting our time and energy in this area, we've got this great community, you too should be here. So, I always think of these as almost sort of marketing plans, as saying, you know, there's something happening. So, some of this will be private funding, it's not all in the public. Yes, sir?
Last question.
Yes, sure.
So, in a project like this, it isn't possible to do everything all at once.
Absolutely.
There isn't enough money available to do it all, it's too large a project. Is there a plan to create, I think the buzzword is a tight urban center, where these things kind of grow organically and periodically? That's really likely to be done quickly and be sufficiently funded so that this begins to grow out? Because you can't do all of, you can't do all the downtown, you can't do all the close street all at once, that means going to drop two billion dollars in the city treasury. So, is, is there a plan to do that, to identify an area so this can actually begin to grow out and create that type of incentive which energizes, you know, huge growth?
That is exactly why we're having you do the mapping exercise, is this idea that by telling us, I see hand there, hand there, this mapping exercise, what you're telling us today goes into exactly that, it's prioritization by area, but also prioritization over time. So, excellent question.
But can I just jump in and say that we already have prioritized Pleasant Street?
Yes.
And before we even started, that was a key focus. So, that's where we're focusing first, and, you know, that's an important card.
Right, Pleasant Street's a very long street.
Yeah.
Whether it's considered tighter or smaller.
Yeah, let me come back to the map here.
We're kind of tending to be focusing between eastern and Quikashan.
Yep. So. Roughly Stafford Street.
Yeah, that's here.
Yeah. You, sir, and then you, ma'am.
Just to piggyback on statistics. We're talking about long-range plans. Those plans are not going to be restricted just to friggin' more, I assume, right? Because you're talking about community, community with people. We have some issues here with what's going to happen, with the rents that's going to happen. And also, you know, I know that, you don't want to go back, I want to thank the state delegation for bringing, bringing the money down here. The reality is that we don't get a chance often to get a state rep, state senator, a mayor, and some city councils in the same room. This community, I've lived in this community basically my entire life, except for my military time. My first apartment was a block down from that window. The last apartment I lived in before I went to the military is the yellow house there. It's two, three decades when you walk out. I've lived in this community my entire life. I walked Pleasant Street when every single store was full. I worked, I, I walked Pleasant Street when you couldn't find an apartment. And the reality is, we, we have to learn from history, and we're doomed to repeat it. And I'm not blaming, this is not to blame, you know, this is great, we're going to invest in the Flint. I lived here my whole life, I loved the Flint, I lived in the city my entire life. The fact is that we, you, we have to get something coordinated which is going to deal with improving our workforce, because the dynamic that we had when the Flint was active is simple. Everybody worked, and we had discretionary income. And small businesses are the engines that drive communities of this size. Small and medium cities are driven by, by people with discretionary cash. And we look at Fall River now, since the mills closed, there were never any apprenticeship programs, business, business, public kinds of things to get people to work like they didn't rely on an electric boat. And we look at the dynamic, I have statistics, which I'll go, I'll deal with. But the fact is, the US Census Bureau says Fall River, right now, and this is the latest, if you don't want to believe my statistics, you can get on the US Census Bureau. Fall River has five thousand, well, it, it's going to be off obviously with a dip, but five thousand two hundred and fourteen businesses. Newton has thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty-four and small. Why? Because the household income in Newton is a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Household income in Fall River is forty-three. We have a demographic with low income and other poor, and, and fixed income people that has to be addressed, is, we're in a, we're in the middle of recession, or inflation, which will soon become it. And I have a letter from the National Building Board, I have some studies about the urban tax, impacts of this kind of stuff. And we have to deal with this because we don't want to just fix up the Flint and then have it die again.
Yes.
So, I just want, I make sure that we make that point. And we're going to look at this long-term, and we're going to look at that multi-faceted approach to this, and we've got more in the room now, so I just wanted to say that.
And I'm glad you did, sir, because that was exactly why we have both FXM and RKG on this team, is to look exactly at that. We'd love to see it, just statistics. But that has been a topic of conversation among the consultant team of how do we? Because as we look at this, right, there are cities all over the world that are saying, you know what, we really need a walkable community where people can come right out of their houses and walk to downtown and walk to recreation. And we all like to visit, and the Flint has everything that people are looking for, except jobs. I'm going to recognize you, but I had a woman in the back first, so, yes, please.
Yeah, my question kind of piggybacks is comments. As you've been speaking, I've been thinking about, you're addressing housing stock. As you're making the investments, as properties are changing hands, as revitalization occurs, how do you bring the present into the future?
Yes.
How do we go about not leaving people behind and, and, you know, we already have a problem if they can't afford, with the market rate housing, with the changes in Fall River, with the railway coming. How do we not adversely affect the people who live in the Flint now, who should be able to still be here ten years from now?
And that is the second topic that has been running around among myself, Iris, and the two economic teams, is keeping people here who are here so that they can receive the benefits of that, of the change in more things coming here, more people coming here, the area getting revitalized. We don't want to kick out the people who have been here all their lives. So, what programs come in for that? How do we structure thinking about that? Some of them might be regulatory changes, some of them might be programmatic changes, some of them might be, to that point, figuring out how to find jobs that residents here could work at, would like to work at, are appropriate, are entrepreneurial, whatever that combination is. We're kind of hoping to hear from you about what some of your thoughts have been, which, I'm starting, actually, the gentleman here, the director, yes, sir.
You know, the, the Flint has an opportunity to become the new downtown. It has everything a city resident, you know, would want. Food, dining, shopping, air cuts, whatever. But as one of those solutions this area does not need, is more market rate housing. Market rate housing is just not needed. It's not sustainable long-term for the average resident who have lived here their whole lives. I know we're talking about the physical aspect. You know, one of those things you can do is repave the roads, repave the sidewalks, clean up the street. If it goes up, take it down. Discipline is not the enemy of enthusiasm. You have to keep up with the appearance of your city. But what's important is you have to keep the human aspect in line with these plans. Because it will be, will not be fair to the average, for the everyday Flint resident to be kicked out, because what they're going to think about is, am I going to be gone ten years from now? Because if you do not have the residents, if they all move, you don't have a name. We're living in unprecedented times right now as a city. Market rate housing is not sustainable. What is sustainable long-term is installing affordable housing options. They, this is their city too. And it shouldn't be right for outside developers to come in, make a quick buck, and then leave. It's not fair. The human aspect needs to be twenty-four-seven in the minds of this planning because they are important. And, and, and last thing I want to say is, is that the upkeep of this, of this plan needs to be enforced. It shouldn't just be a, a short-term fix for the area. It needs to remain a long-term solution, not only for people who live here today, but for future residents of the city. There's been talks about installing a, a new economic tourism director. Well, this is, this is a, a perfect example to, to, to show outside visitors who come to see, say, look, look what we've done. Look what we, look what we can talk about. This is one of the areas, market rate housing is just not one of those solutions. So, I just hope that the human aspect, the city resident, is always in, in these plans twenty-four-seven, because this is their neighborhood, and it wouldn't be right for them to just get priced on and move.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Just got a quick follow-up.
A follow-up, yes, yeah.
Yeah, just because I'm going to give you guys an answer, okay? I see the man smiling. You ask for, you ask for answers.
I did, I asked.
I'm going to let you off the hook, okay?
I did.
You, you know me, brain man, right? I love to do studies. I, I, I looked at numerous urban tax studies, okay? And I can give you links to some of them. This is, this is a, a very small synopsis, but I just kind of condensed it. Urban tax impact studies have shown that there is a dramatic negative impact on low and fixed income and renters. When there is a rapid increase in housing and rents due to developers, developers and gentrification projects, foreclosures and evictions skyrocket in the vulnerable populations. This dynamic, this is, this is the important part. This dynamic can only be offset with targeted government programs at local, state, or federal levels. So, there's your route. Go look for some money to keep, to keep these people, because basically, you'll displace the entire Flint with the way the housing market is going in the Flint with no incremental increases in the taxes. It's going to jump. It's not like Newton where the taxes go up all the time and everybody can afford it. When you, when houses, and like you said, statistically, according to the US Census, a house in twenty, in Fall River sold for two hundred and fifty-six thousand, not a sold for four or five thou, four or five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand. And when people get their tax bills around fixed incomes and low incomes, they are going to be displaced. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
So, I'm going to start there, not because I'm not interested in you and I can have a conversation. I want to make every, sure everybody else gets a chance to go around the boards. So, why don't you all take about twenty minutes? We've got pens if you need them, you have pens to write with. If you need them up here, we've got the stickies. Iris will be over at the maps, Caitlin will be at the back. I'll be floating around for conversations, and we'll come back in about twenty minutes. A few questions at the beginning about what would mean success for you, both in the short term and the long term. I'm sure many of you also continue to have other questions, and be happy to, to answer those as well. But first of all, any volunteers for the short term? Who were standing here a year from today, what would tell you that the people that you saw that was at the beginning have been serious about implementing J? What, what do I see? Yes, sir?
What I said about the handicap accessibility.
So, the ability for people to get into buildings and to storefronts and to the residential building?
Like I said, we live, our complex in the back, there's no ramp, but yet there's handicap parking in the back.
And I, I shared with this gentleman that some storefront program, you mentioned, we, we, you remember that we mentioned that as a tool earlier. Some storefront program actually give funds for helping storefronts address accessibility. So, everybody feels welcome over there. So, so, small thing there. What else? Other ideas for a year from today? So, a year, I can't get too big, I can't promise the entire, you know, change. But what else? What else would, would make you feel that this, or, or as you walk down Pleasant Street, as you walk through the neighborhood, say, oh, yes, we, that happened, that wasn't there before. Remember talking about that?
At least one new building.
At least one new building.
One new building.
At least one.
It might be a toll or a year.
I don't think so, actually.
They're not really that big.
Yeah.
I love that.
Pleasant and Chelmsford Street.
The other banks around.
I'm assuming you put a red dot on the map?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
And also, what we discussed earlier, like the season, basically a more concrete minded, what's going on? Some move, some movement, but as we talked about the real issue about the impact on low-income and fixed-income community with tax increases, would, you know, like to see what's going on, not only on your level, you guys got accuracy, you guys have some liaison to the state reps we had here, the senators, and obviously, they spoke to them already, but even on a federal level, I might not call it both, both marquee, office. Well, I'm talking senators here, a little, a couple of big, I'll call.
You're going straight to the top.
But yeah, we're going to go to the top. But to see, as I said, from that report, the urban report basically said that this would be unsustainable in the initial stages without some help for low-income and fixed-income people.
So for you, it's seeing those programmatic changes.
Yeah, and obviously, these things don't happen overnight, but we really need something to do quickly because the way the inflation's going. I represent all of us, for retirees in Fall River, their average median income is $22,000. You take out the $5,000, they're losing with inflation. And then you take out their Medicare payments, they're down to about $13,000 to live on. And now they're going to get a tax bill based on the increases that we see with these buyers. And I'm not blaming them, they're going to do it, they're going to do it, they're going to try to make money. But the fact is, this is why the government has to intervene. And there's like a thousand studies out there that says the only alternative to act as a bridge is have something like that happen.
Sorry, you totally ruined, have you off? Yeah, it's all been valuable. You, sir, you had mentioned building, building a year, or at least starting a build, in size, right? I might change that.
The other thing that would be incredible is that somehow we could come to terms with a clear-cut list as to, you know, like you said with the zoning, like, okay, this is going to go here and this is what we would like to see there. Maybe that would bring in potential businesses that have that idea. Because let's face the facts, right now, every, a lot of businesses in Fall River, they're booming and they need new locations.
So making sure.
And the biggest thing, as me, me as a business owner, is finding a location where I can expand. So we need to try to look at the businesses we have and try to say, hey, I think what would be a gigantic success is that if we could find a spot, let's say that somebody that's busting out the seams and see them build and create more jobs. I think that would be incredible.
That's a great idea. I'm glad you brought up the commercial as well, because this is housing and commercial. Yes, ma'am, in the UMass Dartmouth shirt.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. What about parking? Like I think of people like my mom, she's having a knee replacement. I know we have parking on the Cass Street side, and I think there's a couple of small lots in different places. I know we talked about having benches along the way, more handicap accessible ramps and stuff like that. But can we highlight parking? So if we have all of these businesses come in and all of these improvements, where are we going to park if, you know, the streets get full and all that? Are we going to have signage, like 15-minute parking, 30-minute parking? I always, I'm always thinking about that because I have a toddler and it just gets crazy with like four different bags and a stroller. So I'd like to, like, talk about parking.
Heard loud and clear, that's great. And it's great to hear that, you know, that's actually something that we know is small lots, multifamily houses on small lots, not a whole lot of places to park. So yes, I'm glad you brought that up. I can see Iris is furiously writing things down, so thank you, I'll take that. Yes, yes.
I think about a year out, that I would love to see a, an image and a slogan that encapsulates what the vision is for Pleasant Street corridor, so that when, no matter where you are, who you are, that when you see that, you know that that means X, Y, and Z. That is your calling card for entrepreneurs. It is a welcome mat for people who are looking for a place to call home, but that it is, you know, just like the Big Apple is New York. What is Fall River? What is the Pleasant Street corridor? And in a year's time, have that defined so that people look at that and they know.
Question for the crowd. Any thoughts?
Pleasant Street corridor.
Pleasant Street corridor, any images spring to mind? Positive, forward-thinking images spring to mind for the flash? Pleasant Street? Maybe something to think about for the next time we get in touch with you? Yes, sir?
I also want to say, I think it's about damn time, sorry to say this, say goddamn, you know, borders, but it's about time we paved Pleasant Street. Pleasant Street is a disaster. You got to swerve like go-karts, Mario Kart, back and forth, just to avoid problems. You know, if you want to have an attractive community, you have to repave the road, repave the sidewalks, make sure that the cleans are swept, you know, consecutively, because you want to have the good feeling of attractiveness. You know, you got to beautify the area and the opportunity is here, but you just have to execute. That's all.
All right. But I like that idea of, you know, fixing what's already here before starting before. Before, we have, I think, 6:30 to 8:30, but I want to make sure. What? You thought it was eight? I saw your time. Yeah, yeah. We have time for a little bit more. But if you, Mayor, I don't know how many things are.
I think we told the guys eight.
Sorry?
I think we told them eight o'clock.
Oh, did you really? All right. So what I'm going to do is I want to run through very quickly what I have for you next, and then we'll jump back and keep going until they kick us out. As long as it's, you know, before you go. All right. Just for more information, so we have something called a story map online. That's the first thing to the, to the left there. And that story map is a way of diving into a lot of the information that we collected. We also have a survey that's part of it. I've been told today that it is not user-friendly, for my apologies if I tried it and it didn't make sense. We will be doing another survey at another point and we'll use a different format for that. So if you get a chance, at least check out the story map. There's a lot of the underlying conditions that we've been using, and you can zoom in about. We also have a video, that's the one on the left, sorry, on the right, that just talks a little bit about the process at very high level. If you bump into people who want to know what's going on, you mentioned we were at this meeting, please send them to that video and then keep an eye out for more things. We will have more, another survey, have more touch points as we move through. We will leave that particular survey open just for another week. It's been open for a while. As I said, a draft for a map, that was written a little early, sometime this month or next month, in draft form, for additional comments. It's not much, we'll be done and dusted. And then completing the draft for the urban plan around August-ish, so that we can move it into the municipal process in September. And I think that there'll be at least one more public meeting as part of that process, plus the whole public process approval, which is for a lot of different types of public meetings. With that, that is it. I'm happy to take some more questions. Please, and that is all yours.
We got a great crowd here tonight. I can see there's a lot of good, positive comments on all the boards. I can't thank you enough for giving up a Wednesday evening to join us. It's really important, I appreciate it. And we will keep these going. We have work to do on Pleasant Street.